Good evening, I'd like to call the committee meeting to order. Would everyone please rise for the prayer and pledge allegiance?
Dear Heavenly Father, we call upon you this evening, asking for your guidance in our decision-making. Give us the wisdom to make our judgments based on the best interests of this community and the children we serve. These things we ask, in your name.
Amen.
Ms. Jackson, would you lead us into pledges, please?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please, Ms. Voeche.
Mr. Campbell?
Here.
Ms. Harris?
Here.
Ms. Jackson?
Here.
Mr. Lee Bowman?
Here.
Mr. Long?
Here.
Ms. Moon?
Here.
Ms. Isar?
Here.
Ms. Rodney?
Here.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Here.
Mr. Warner?
Here.
And Ms. White?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Voeche. Before we go over to our regular agenda items, I'd like to take this point of privilege to wish Ms. Carly Jackson a very happy birthday. Happy birthday, Carly. Okay. First item on the agenda is an education item. Mrs. White?
Thank you. Yes, we have 2.1 summer programs presented by Ms. Leanne.
Good evening. How is everybody?
Good.
Good. When I was asked to give you a list of all the summer programs that we have available, it was a big undertaking because we have a lot of summer programs available, okay? As one of the Pritchett boys used to say, "A plethora." You know, so that was his favorite word in elementary school. Okay, so if you look at the list, I made an outline of the list. The first four are the actual summer learning and grade recoveries. We have one at Shellman High School. We have a secondary, or we have a middle one at just Raleigh for Raleigh students, okay? Then the second one is at Shellman High School. The third one is, I'm sorry, the first one is middle school. I missed that. And then the third one is the Raleigh students not meeting promotional standards. And the fourth one is the summer program for first, second, and fifth graders at Davie School who do not meet promotional standards, okay? So those are the ones who don't meet promotional standards or have to be pupil progressed. They come to those schools. We also invite the L. kids to those summer schools if they need extra help, okay? The next one is the summer literacy program for third and fourth graders that will be held at Merrow. And you notice I have two dates on there, two two-week periods. We don't know the numbers of this. We're testing the kids Thursday and Friday of this week, and we'll be getting the results probably sometime mid-next week. And we'll be meeting with parents to tell them about the children having to come to summer school for 30 hours. So we made it into two two-week programs, so we're going to assign times for the kids. But if a child can't come the first time, then maybe we can put him in the second session, okay? Now, if kids fail in third and fourth grade to meet the promotional standards, they have to come the entire four weeks of that program, okay? But the ones who are just there for literacy have to come for 30 hours, okay? And I know that y'all asked about special ed students, and that will be an IEP decision once everything is determined, okay? The next thing is the special education summer camp. That's going to be at Merrow for children with cognitive impairments, okay? So that's going to be also at Merrow School, and that's going to be run by the special ed department. And notice on the left-hand side, I put the dates. The next one is the STEM science camp, which is four weeks, and it's $150 a week. And the registration has to be paid by April, I think it's April 18th. So they're not taking any late registrations, but it's $150 a week for each week. And that's at the MoMA Center. The next one is swimming lessons for anybody is interested, that's interested in first through fifth grade, incoming first through fifth graders. And that's $50 for the 10-hour sessions. I think there's four of them that they can opt to see which one they choose, and that's at the Naddatorium. The next one is the accelerated reader program for all kids in elementary through high school. We house this at Davie's, and they're welcome to come anytime that the school is open from May 15 to 12:45, from May 31st until June 28th. The next one is the high school band camp. And this is for band members that are entering grades nine through 12. They already have to be in a band, and they have a nice camp for those kids if they would like to come. And notice they have it tentatively scheduled for 1:00 to 6:00 in the afternoon from July 17th to 21st and July 24th to 28th. So those will be some later programs that we have for incoming band members. The next one is the driver's ed program. It's going to be announced depending on the, how many people we get to request driver's ed. And that will be held at Shellman High School, and again, it depends on demand, okay? And the last one, I had asked Annalise Cassar to give me an outline of the program at Shellman High School, and she writes beautifully, but I just condensed it. So it's basically that they have a performing arts academy and an in-depth training in the arts, which offers opportunities for students to excel in this field, okay? And they have one at the high school, and then they also do some for the elementary students who excel in art and music. And they have that camp for them also, which is also part of the arts program. So we house them. The meeting dates and times will vary according to the needs. Now, I know that the elementary's coming when our kids come to summer skills, so they'll be catching the buses with our kids to go to that. As far as the middle and high, Annalise chooses dates to do each of their programs because they have an extensive amount of different programs that they offer. It's beautiful what they do during the summertime for these kids that excel in the arts. The end.
Hi, thank you. Do we have any questions from the board?
I have, I have one question. Actually, I have two real quick.
Okay.
For the STEM camp and the swimming lessons, do we offer fee waivers for economically disadvantaged students, or could someone offer a scholarship for students who might not be able to afford?
Doris? I don't know.
Yeah, people go off for scholarships.
Okay.
Okay. And then my second question would be, if we're going to get the results back from the testing next week, could we know maybe for the May committee meeting about how many students?
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay.
Anyone else? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we have 2.2, school safety plans presented by Alex.
We have, we have several people to talk about, you know, our school's safety plans and also prevention plans that we have in our school system that will address the issues that we have been discussing. I'm going to ask them to all do their presentation first, and then I'll just kind of wrap up some of the areas that we talk about. I know that we had some issues on school safety, and then, of course, with the latest school shooting issues across the country, we had some other people with some issues about the actual crisis and safety plans. So we're going to do both at the same time. So Ms. Schneider, who oversees our crisis and management plans along with Mr. Jason Dewey, will do the first part of this.
Great. Good evening, folks. My name's Alex Schneider. For those of you who are new to the board, I haven't had a chance to meet you guys. I am, I wear a couple of different hats. I used to be up here quite a bit, but it's nice to see you all. So this evening, we're going to walk through our school safety emergency operations plans with you all. And Jack, I'm going to have you throw it over to our PowerPoint to kind of lead us through this discussion. There will be four of us presenting this evening. Each of us is a multifaceted team. I will be addressing emergency operations plans from an external threat perspective. We'll be seeing Jason Dewey right after that. We'll be talking about supervision of facilities and maintenance. Charles Cassar will be working with us this evening on student well-being and social-emotional programming. Joe Sipollone will be joining us in discussing our various social-emotional programming, both in our K-12, all of our schools, as well as Raleigh Alternative. And then Ms. Voeche is going to conclude us by kind of summarizing some of the things we've got going on. So I know we've heard quite a bit about the emergency operations plans, so I just want to hit overall kind of the journey we've been through together as we have developed these plans out over the last several years. So as a reminder, the timeline, in fall of 2015, we contracted with the LSU Stevenson Institute to devise the first-in-the-state tactical plans for active shooter. And this was really a comprehensive initiative that involved multiple agencies throughout the area, including Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, GOSEP, and then the ambulance. And alongside our district leaders, with school leaders, each school came to the table, and they walked through the tactical maps. And so these are obviously, I'll collect these when we're done, but I'm going to show you what these plans actually look like, so you guys can have a sense of how comprehensive those plans are. But that began in 2015. In May of 2016, we concluded that project, and Brent Mitchell with the LSU Stevenson Institute presented those finalized plans to the board. Obviously, Nero Elementary School came after that, and those plans were done in 2018. So in fall of 2021, we knew that while the active shooter tactical maps were a great kind of foundation for our emergency operations plans, lots of things had changed over the years, and we needed to revise our holistic crisis and emergency operations plans. And so we went back to the LSU Stevenson Institute and contracted with them to conduct an extensive audit of all of our schools' emergency operations plans alongside our district plan. We began that in the fall of 2021. Summer of 2022, the Stevenson Institute came back to the school board and presented those plans to you then. So included in that process that we began last fall, there was a thorough audit of our current plans, processes, and procedures. So they looked at everything that we were currently doing. They audited those plans to make sure they were best-practiced nationally speaking. We did threat assessments for each of our campuses where they looked at both the internal and external threats, anything from weather to, you know, God forbid, an active shooter event. We did update all tactical maps. There had been some changes to Tris Middle School and several of our other campuses that involved some changes to our tactical maps. And then, of course, we collaborated with the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and EMS. So these are the plans that everyone's kind of operating from. And so you have those plans in front of you. These are obviously pretty confidential, as these are shared with, you know, specific people within our office, school-level leaders, and then the Sheriff's Department, Fire Department, and the ambulance. What was shared externally was we have a faculty and staff emergency procedure guide. This would be the procedural guide that staff would need to know in the event of a crisis on campus. Where is the nearest exit? How, you know, if this code is called, or if this is happening, what do I do next? And then we sent home emergency guides, these are also located on our website, to all families in October of last year. So now we're really in the operationalization of these plans. And so, you know, we've been doing SWAT and Sheriff's Department practices at each of our campuses over the summer for some time now, and those are continuing. What we're looking forward to doing in collaboration with the Sheriff's Department are tabletop scenarios, essentially where, you know, a variety of situations are presented to both school and police officials, and we walk through together what would be the step-by-step procedure in addressing those, kind of as a way to train our faculty. Ongoing school and district leadership training, our continued SRO partnerships at Raleigh and CHS. And then the other thing we're in the process of doing right now is improving our alert and communication systems, both with families, students, and then faculty. So that's where we are for that component of our planning process. And I think we're going to wrap up with questions at the very end, so we can circle back. But until then, I'm going to hand this over to Jason, who's going to talk through school facilities.
Thank you, Alex. Good evening, everyone. How are y'all doing? Nice to see you all again. I just want to briefly touch on some of our facility-related steps that we have taken and that are upcoming in relation to school security, also in relation to recommendations that were made by the Stevenson Center, as well as general best practices. First and foremost, one of our primary concerns is having a single point of entry at all of our campuses, so that we can ensure that, sorry.
Nope.
Ensure that we have one single point with controlled access to enter our buildings, allow us to screen people as they come into our buildings, and decide who is going to be allowed access beyond an initial contact with our front offices or that assigned area or single point of entry. All of our schools have that, with the exception of a few. And where we're at with that is we're just finishing a project to take care and install single point of entry at both Andrew Jackson Middle School, as well as St. Bernard Middle School. Those are finishing up or have just finished up, and we are looking forward and in the process of planning to add on to the front office area of Tris Middle School and create a efficient single point of entry system and situation there as well. So that is the next one that's upcoming, as well as CF Rally. Those two buildings specifically are our last two to get single point of entry installed and operating properly at those buildings. So that is where we are heading right now. As a matter of fact, we're in the planning phases of those currently. Beyond the single point of entry, security cameras, we are always in the process of evaluating our security cameras. We have approximately 2,000 security cameras amongst all of our facilities across the entire district. We are piloting some new cameras to just determine their efficacy and see if it's something we would like to move forward with. And we are always evaluating the current status of the cameras, making sure that if anything is not functioning properly, we're addressing it as quickly as humanly possible to keep those up, so that we can be both proactive and reactive to any incidents that may happen on campus. And then the final piece of this is just the hardening of our school perimeters, which was something that was looked at and evaluated by the Stevenson Center and in a number of the entities that were involved in that process. And by hardening those perimeters, we really just mean making sure that we have continuous and, you know, effective fencing and gate procedures and pieces in place. So in addition to the front entry or the single point of entry project we just finished at St. Bernard Middle School, we are also doing some additional fencing to secure some items in some areas of the building there, because we want to make sure that those areas that are accessed by students are not immediately or easily accessible by just anyone, obviously, who would enter our campuses. So from a facility standpoint, that is our three biggest pieces that we're focusing on, where we're at, what we've just completed, and what we are about to undertake.
Thank you. Do it.
I think you have somebody else. I'm going to do questions on the external pieces first.
Sure. Yep.
Oh, Dewey? Okay, good.
Yeah, we can take questions for the external threats.
Okay. Does anybody have a question for Jason? Any questions? Diana?
I just want a clarification, or just as far as our emergency operations plan, I know there's a reunification center that parents would meet in case of, God forbid, a major catastrophe or sign of violence in the school. Have all the parents been made aware of, in addition to the faculties, I know the faculties had to meet with the administration, so that everybody's on the same page and they're very aware of the plans. But have the parents also been made aware of all the emergency procedures?
The reunification location was part of the parent and family materials that was supplied last October. And so that was given then. The Sheriff's Department also advised us, you know, given the nature of whatever those events could be, it could be something like an active shooter, it could also be a chemical spill or something of that nature that we would have to remove students, that that might change. And so being sure that our alert system at that point is really able to communicate to parents, this is where our reunification location is, is going to be really, really important. So that has been communicated in a couple of different ways, and we're looking to, you know, definitely ensure that all of our families know where to pick up their students, but it might ebb and flow given the nature of the crisis.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Alex, could you talk a little about teacher training for the emergency plans? How are teachers trained and updated on those procedures and protocols?
Yep. So initial training of our faculty involved the, LSU Institute, over the summer during our administrative training, came in and did a training with our admin teams on the various protocols that were within that staff desktop. They took that training and used the PowerPoints to kind of redeliver to their own staff. And so that happened at the beginning of the year. What we're looking at currently in our implementation process is using scenario-based tabletops to work with staff at planning period meetings or at PLCs to be able to say, okay, you have this plan in front of you, you have two minutes, here's the scenario, what do you do? And have the staff kind of work through it that way. While it's one thing for them to hear procedurally what to do, it's another thing for them to actually have to implement some sort of steps. And so that's what we're really looking forward to doing throughout the summer and then over starting next school year.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? Millen?
So I know that we recently applied for funds to do the single point of entries, and hopefully we'll get those. Do we have an idea of what the cost would look like if we aren't given those grant funds, so that we could be prepared for that?
Yes, ma'am. We are actually in the process of ascertaining that information right now. So we hope to have very solid numbers on what the projects will cost, regardless of acquisition of grant funds or not, very shortly, within the next one to two weeks.
Thank you so much.
Yes.
Thank you. Anyone else? Sean?
Jason, what's the timeline on completing single point of entry at those facilities?
So to be exact is difficult, because what we need to do is, obviously, with a project like this, it's going to be something that we're going to have to go out and take bids for and engage contractors with. That being said, we want it to be as immediate as possible, but we also want to do it in a way that it affects and impacts day-to-day business in the schools as minimally as possible. So we are going to start right away, but I do need a lot of the items that are going to be involved, a lot of storefront glass windows, there's a lot that goes into it that are considered specialty items, that have to be manufactured and fabricated specifically to the measurements of our schools. It takes some time, so we do need to get those lead times on the items from, you know, from all the manufacturers. So it's very hard to give me, give you an exact, but as fast as we can possibly do it is where we're going.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Anyone else?
What was the formula in picking which schools got single point of entries before the others?
So there wasn't a formula, per se. Where we had, most of our schools that were rebuilt following Hurricane Katrina were built with single point of entry specifically. In remodel instances, because of the nature of all of this and the way that things work, these things have become, obviously, considered best practice over time, and as unfortunately this active shooter situation, school shooting situations have become more and more prevalent. So there was not a specific formula. It was basically the few that we had that were not specifically built in this manner, we were revisiting and remodeling right away.
So the older schools were able to do the single point of entry right away? It was easier to put it on the newly, new-built schools?
Exactly. As they were being constructed, it was just constructed that way from ground up, whereas schools that had remodels and things of that nature, because of a number of factors that even predate my involvement with it at this point, they just did not have that in that remodel phase, so we're adding it at this point.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. But it wasn't like some formula that we said, this one goes first, or it wasn't that type of thing. Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. With the single point entry in mind, but the metal detectors going to be considered at some schools, all the schools, considering if you eliminate, a good chance that they can't sneak a weapon in the school, that naturally eliminates an active shooting probability.
So at this particular point in time, I do not have any, any plans or anything in the works to add metal detectors to our schools. That being said, that is always something that is open for discussion and implementation. But at this very moment, we are not looking at building metal detection into the single point projects at this time.
Thank you so much.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else? Thanks, Jason. Oh, I'm sorry, Millen?
From a professional development standpoint, and talking about working with our teachers during their PLCs to get things done, do we recommend which sections they should work through? Do we give them exactly what we want them to work on, you know, for instance, or is the administration picking out the case study?
Sure. So we are looking at the first 60, which is a program that does the scenario-based tabletops. And we would be doing that in conjunction with some of the scenarios that we've personally faced from just administrators who've had day-to-day interactions from a tornado or anything of that nature. What happened previously was alongside the LSU Stevenson Institute during our administrative training, they kind of pinpointed the areas of most concern for their school building, and we were able to deliver that at that point. We'll be looking at those scenario-based trainings with our administrators and just identifying, you know, what is our biggest priority, and how do we get them accustomed to that? Keeping in mind that while active shooter is obviously, you know, so traumatic, weather-related events, you know, industrial events are also things that we need to make sure our staff is ready for, and so we'll be talking through that as well.
So I know that a number of the folks in the audience tonight have been here before, concerned about physical violence in school, and I saw that there's a threat of violence annexed, in particular, the high school plan. Is that one of those that is repeatedly reviewed, and that teachers and staff members are aware of how to respond to threats of physical violence in the school?
Yes. So the way that we think of the emergency operations plans and that specific threat assessment component was really an external threat. I think the, and we're going to have quite a bit of conversation after Jason and I step down around school culture. And so when we talk about student violence, student fights, that's really going to be addressed while it is briefly mentioned in there. When they mention acts of violence, a lot of what they had in mind was external threats to the school community. We'll be talking about some various programming that we have in place to kind of address the school culture.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
You know, and when you talk a little bit, too, about lockdown and drills and those types of things, we do that especially at the beginning of each year, and we have either a, you know, deputy representative in the Sheriff's Office on campus as we do a lockdown drill or something like that. And we have an actual lockdown, which, for example, one of our elementary schools experienced two lockdowns in the same week. That had to do with the Sheriff's Department apprehending a person around the school setting, you know, not in the school itself. So we went through those lockdown procedures at that time, then we got the all-clear, and then we sat around with the Sheriff's Department, okay, how did that work? What could we have done better? What could they have done better? Was there any type of communication lag? And those, that was like a, two real-life scenarios that we were able to do, as opposed to what we're going to be doing here and experiencing tabletop scenarios of if this would happen. Now, talk about what those procedures would be. So we had two in an elementary school, then we had one at another elementary school that had something else to do with an outside person as well. So those types of things are opportunities in real life to say, did it work when we did it? Sheriff's Department, what did you see? What did we see? How did you respond? Where did you come in? What access did you have? Was it easy? You know, these types of things that we're talking about.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. I'm Charles Kassar. And for those of you new board members, I'd like to give you a little background about myself. I came to the central office in 1992 and was brought in to help both creatively as well as substantially provide substance abuse prevention within our schools. And those programs really came together in such a way to develop both a very rich cultural arts program within our school district as well as, I think, a real creative form of drug prevention in our schools because everybody knows it's the wrong thing to do. But how we present it to our students and all of these messages that are so controversial have got to be presented in a way that kids want to buy them, want to embrace them, want to believe them. And it is so important that as we do those things, we do them in a way that is both developmentally appropriate, which we'll talk about in a moment, as well as in a way that speaks to them culturally as to where kids are. And as we know, young people's culture is continually developing and evolving. And the impact of social media has had such an impact upon that process. So if you will follow with me, you have a pretty intense group of papers that will help you, I think, follow through. And as we begin that, I think first some background. And there's a lot to say here, so please bear with me. I think the process of conversation will bring you to a place of great understanding. So in the eighties, under the Reagan administration, America realized that we were involved in a genuine crisis of drug abuse. And it was a crisis that stretched economically from the most disadvantaged to the most affluent. One of the most notable families, the Hilton family, as in the International Hilton Fortune, their family was completely devastated by abuse of substances within the family. And they contributed multiple millions of dollars through the eighties into the nineties to help America wake up to that crisis. And unfortunately, the understanding of all this is so complex, ladies and gentlemen. And the Reagans had the opportunity to work with media, hello, media, and said, we need to develop a media program which essentially created that just say no process. Well, that became very controversial because though it helped people talk about what needed to be talked about, it did not necessarily begin to provide real training and change factors. Both pieces, however, are truly critical. So America has been going through this journey of realizing that substance abuse and violence are so intensely connected. You add on top of that the power of social media and this becomes quite complicated, ladies and gentlemen. So we are in that journey, I think, as a country of trying to understand all of these factors. And as they, as they impact young people, unfortunately, we as a people tend to center on the negativity of what takes place and certainly within our schools, the negativity, when in fact, there is so many productive things that are going on with young people. And so I'm going to walk you through some of the things that we do. And I think it will help give you a background as to both our very seasoned board members as well as the new. So we, we implement a program in all of our elementary schools, K through five, in a program that's called Second Step. All of these programs are considered social emotional developmental programs. They are research-based. They are nationally recognized. There's data that's collected so that young people who go through these experiences can be systematically helped to understand some really important aspects. And if you'll take a moment to look in that very first set, there are 19 lessons, which takes us through a very large part of the school year. And then the 20th, 21st, and 22nd lesson really helps begin to tie all of this together. And if you look at them, which I shared with you guys, the fifth grade version, empathy and respect, listening with attention, being assertive, predicting feelings, taking others' perspective, accepting differences, disagreeing respectfully, responding with compassion, introducing emotional management, calming down, managing anxiety, managing frustration, resisting revenge, handling put downs, avoiding assumptions, solving problems one, solving problems two, making a plan, seeking help, dealing with gossip, dealing with peer pressure, and then reviewing all the second step. This takes our elementary children, K through five, over the course of the school year, through these and other concepts that developmentally help build the building blocks of being a community member, being part of the school community, hopefully being part of the community at large, and how to separate what maybe is not happening at home or what is happening inappropriately at home to a place so that students know, how then shall I function? How then should I live? How can I be a successful person? We then move to the middle school level, which is our second packet. And we do Second Step there as well. And there's some other initiatives that are in the process, which we'll talk about. And if you look at that material, Lesson One, Working in Groups, Lesson Two. And you go, working with groups, and you immediately dismiss that. Think about what that means. Bringing young people together and needing to work cooperatively. How impactful, what critical life skills that really is. It is the foundation of society. It's the foundation of civilization. We've got to get kids to a point that irregardless of where they come from, the positives or the negatives, that a child can come together and learn to work respectfully with each other. Lesson Two, disagreeing respectfully, negotiating and compromising, giving and getting support. Isn't it lovely when kids can be nice to one another? As a classroom teacher, 13 years at St. Bernard, Donald Campbell was one of my fellow mentors who I learned so very much from. I became Field Trip Charlie because of Donald Campbell saying, uh, did you take those kids to go see that? Have you been to the Cabildo? What about the St. Louis Cathedral? Field Trip Charlie I became thanks to Donald Campbell. And in that process, I had one rule in my classroom. I'm not proud to say, but as a nervous, high-strung individual, I let kids chew gum because I did. But my one rule was you had to be nice to one another. And I was relentless in that. And it created an environment of success within my classes. And so as we move through these things, people throw terms around constantly about bullying and assertiveness and all of those things. And there isn't a one piece fix to any of this. This is a developmental process of helping to build civility in our children. Lesson Five, under the bullying prevention piece, responding to bullying, cyberbullying, sexual harassment. Ladies and gentlemen, wake up to the power of the cell phone that is within our children's lives. It, we have nothing to offer as educators in some respects if we cannot come to grips with what that cell phone's about because it speaks to them in every aspect of their lives. Hence the sexual harassment piece, emotional management, understanding anger, staying in control, coping with stress. Myths and facts, kids and community are so easily moved by what people think is as opposed to what really is. And it is a wise man and woman who can differentiate those things. And that doesn't happen necessarily overnight. We need to help build those pieces in kids' lives. And again, there's a sixth grade version of this, a seventh grade version, an eighth grade version. So from K through eight, children on a weekly basis or an every-two-week basis, either through PE or through the cultural arts block. And in the elementary school, PE block means art, music, PE, library, okay? Those, those teachers form the component of the delivery of this information. And most importantly, it's not just the delivery of it, but our schools excel. I invite you guys to go to any of our schools and go see this in operation. You will be amazed at what they do. Goche, perfect example. The PE teachers incorporate this with fun and games and the gym becomes engulfed with excitement and fun with Second Step because there's a discussion about this and then they live it. They go do things. It's, it's, it's not just ingrained, but it is literally incorporated into all aspects of what occurs within the classroom and beyond the classroom. So I've mentioned that some of this is helping children become community members, right? Your next small piece of paper, I called Ms. Morell yesterday and said, can you send to me, please, your list of terrific kids from March? And bingo, got it today. And every elementary school, on a continual, ongoing basis, children, and please look at it, take a minute. Children are being recognized monthly for their willingness to improve. From the poorest of behaved children all the way to the most amazing of children, there is the opportunity for children to be recognized and celebrated. And you know what, guys? This isn't done by us. Kiwanians come in, these men and women, in mine now, 31 years at the central office. Can you only imagine? I came here when I was six years old. In the 31 years being here, Kiwanians have helped take this concept and reward children and help build them to become community members. A crisis part of this process, for sure. So obviously, a large part of the question of the day is high school. If you will look at this amazing diagram that's in front of you, those of you that know me well know I never boast about the things we do, but this is one I'm willing to boast about. Ms. Sarah Felt, our teacher at Davies, is brilliant. She really is. And Charles and she work together because I think kids need a graphic to help them understand things. And what we did here is to help show kids think as they begin to become teenagers that they're going to be their own man. And I'm, I'm thinking for myself, little do kids realize the immense capacity of the world that is constantly pushing on them in making decisions. And what this diagram does is there's a kid's head and the gears that are running inside of us and you as adults as well. These factors are constantly influencing what you think about what you think about. From media to values to kids who are on medication, kids who are faith-based, the traumas that are taking place in the community, in the world, in children's lives, hormones, COVID, family, family good, family crisis, children's fears. We have more kids dealing with anxiety than probably ever before. Goals, unreachable? Has the American dream died in some people's minds? What are we doing to help kids begin to grapple with these particular pieces? When we start this program, which actually tomorrow, I need your books back, ladies and gentlemen, tonight because tomorrow starts our 12-day journey of this program called Too Good for Drugs and Violence. And the way that works, there's so much to share with you guys. The way this works is kids that are ninth grade PE and cultural arts in the first semester go through this program. And then kids who are in second semester PE and cultural arts because of block, start this tomorrow. And we're doing that in conjunction with, the gym is completely absorbed at this point because on Thursday, you guys will get to celebrate our commitment to community. So while that's being built, our kids are in the cultural arts building doing this program. So in the process of that, we open this journey with this concept to help kids begin to grapple with, what is driving you? What is encouraging you? What is discouraging you? And we open this story saying, more important than math, good lord, I might lose my job with our superintendent, more important than math, more important than social studies, more important than anything else that you are going to encounter in school. These 12 days are the most important decision-making materials that is going to happen in your life. And we incorporate these pieces. And I've put in here specifically, part of what we do with this is that as kids become comfortable with our conversation of doing this, each of these gears develop into a large laminated piece. And of course, it's visual, up on the technology. And we ask kids to begin to contemplate these pieces. And I've put in front of you truly some of the most radically important pieces of this discussion. Media. And think about what media, from the newspaper to social media, to television, to the internet. Every imaginable piece is speaking to kids at this point in time. Family. You know, we can develop and teach and give and build. And a child goes home and a parent can take the legs out of this in a moment. Parents that say, it doesn't matter. You need to do this. You need to fight. You need to be revengeful. And all of our work, ladies and gentlemen, in a moment, has been nullified. It is the crisis of the day between media, family, and then ultimately, what are our values? What do we really count as important? What matters to us as people, as a community? Those people who came back to St. Bernard after Katrina, came back, why? Because of one another, of a sense of belonging and no, there's no place like home, Dorothy. This might be the real us in so many ways. We move then through this process. And if you guys have a moment and would really care to look through the book, you can see the many pieces to this process that we talk about. Setting goals, decision-making, identifying and managing emotions, effective communication, building relationships. We obviously get into the effects of alcohol, of nicotine, the effects of marijuana, prescription drugs, and street drugs, respect for self and others, conflict resolution, stress management, healthy Healthy dating relationships. Social media awareness. And following right behind that is a, a copy of an email. And the way we present this material, we open up these concepts, this discussion with kids. We bring together, and, and this is so magically done, I think. We bring this concept forward and we deliver it this way. As opposed to people who just tell kids, oh, my goodness, you're on your way to being an adult. You're going to have to pay bills and insurance and it's miserable. We do just the opposite. We tell, holy mackerel, you're on your way to being an adult and you're going to get to make your own decisions, ladies and gentlemen. You know what? We're going to give you the facts and you make your own decisions. Because we've learned, the more you tell kids, no, 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 it becomes, no, I'm not listening. But the more we're able to say to them, here's the facts. You make your own decisions. I think we've, we have seen, this is year two of this process. We've had to shut this down because of COVID, right when we were starting it. And we're at a point now where I think we're beginning to see real results. And we start the process and then a person comes in who has real experience in each of these things. And you can look at who our guest speakers are. We have Ms. Madison from Ashna who talks about vaping. President McGinnis comes in and speaks about goal-setting. Pastor Truitt from the Celebration Church in Araby, who was a complete hopeless drug addict and his return from catastrophe to becoming a genuine community member. It's an amazing story. Robbie Showalter comes in and talks about goal-setting with business opportunities and professions and opportunities that, that await us. Sheriff Pullman comes in. And these people come in and not one, not an hour and they're gone. They spend the entire day with us and talk to all four periods. Every kid that's in this process gets to hear the sheriff speak or the president speak or the person, Dan Schneider, the, the man himself, the pharmacist now who's internationally famous, comes and spends the day with excerpts from what occurred in, on Netflix. The impact of this is pretty profound, ladies and gentlemen, because we've learned kids hear the same teacher every day. Which is so very important, you bring new voices in and there's a better opportunity for kids to want to hear it. Back to community members, again, on the high school level. The man over there, sitting right over there, made probably the most profound statement, I, I believe that I've known educationally. And the statement is simply this. The choices you make today shape your world tomorrow. It is, it tells it all, isn't it? And it's all about helping kids be able to grapple with all those gears that are working, either for them or against them, and to be able to pull it together so that they can make good decisions. And the kids that you see in this, this little brochure or kids that are from some of our most severe sped kids to truly some of the most gifted and talented of kids. And teachers have something great to say about those kids. And there's an award ceremony. And once again, the Kiwanis come and celebrate the good of these kids. When the Too Good for Drugs program is finished at our high school level, we then go to another program that is called Stack Deck. And if you look at the picture, a picture tells a thousand words. Look at the screen, right? Look at the cards. A new whole wave of gambling is developing, ladies and gentlemen, before your eyes. I shared with Ms. Vouchet, there was a, a young man in the freshman academy. Wonderful kid. Basketball player. And we started the conversation and he said to me, Mr. Kassar, I have won $600 gambling, a freshman. And I said, what? And he said, yep, I only gamble on basketball because that's what I know. You understand where this is going. Kids get drawn in so early on and they don't even understand the magnitude. They think that there's the power to do this and be successful. And what, what this program does, rather than simply say, don't gamble, it begins to explain and unfold this whole process of how it works, of how the house or the dealer never loses. They always win. And again, time is running on, ladies and gentlemen. But we are the only school district at this point that is doing this process. This is, we are being funded to do this through Metropolitan Human Service District. The developers of this are an amazing team of, of PhDs from Canada who have put 20 years of development into this process. And they saw it coming, that the internet would eventually become the gambling mechanism. And as we see, it's happened within the last three years. It has literally happened in front of us. So then in the emotional, social arena as well, another incredible piece, again, a combination of men and women who are willing to help children make their way successfully in this world. Some, some years ago, Ronnie Lamarck reached out to Ms. Vouchet and said that he had made a significant contribution to a project that, that originated in Jefferson Parish called Next Generation. And Next Generation is a faith-based endeavor that operates in about 85 schools now across from Florida all the way into Texas. And what it does is essentially, it gives kids an opportunity to come together as a group. They formalize a club. And the club then invites clergy to come be a part. And at lunchtime, pizza is served. And kids go through a, usually about a 15 or 16-part agenda of a curriculum about appropriate dating, how to get along with others, sexuality, all of these very complicated issues that kids are dealing with. And it puts a God perspective on it. It is interdenominational. And the, the pizza part, and I really want to say this to you guys because people could easily say, oh, sure, kids are coming to get pizza. Pizza is so that kids can come because in a half an hour lunchtime, you go get in line, you get your lunch, by the time you get up to the meeting, it's over. So the pizza is simply a mechanism so that kids can still eat. This is a program that is, has been going on now for quite some time. If you'll look at the, the details, this gives you the dates, the numbers of kids in attendance, the numbers of pizza served, and some of the wonderful people that help support the effort. You notice I've mentioned Kiwanis a great deal. You know, if, those of you that know Kiwanis know that a great deal of their focus is in development of young people. That's a great deal of their process. And we have been very fortunate to be part of their leadership initiative. From the time I came to the central office, I realized that we need to develop a leader in every kid, if at all possible, from the most quiet to the most obnoxious. If we can help them see that their potential is all about working toward a goal and making a difference, then kids have a purpose. And when people have a purpose, there's reason to come to school. There's reason to live. And the key leader is the, the largest leadership program available to students of all school walks of life, not just private schools, but from the most public to the most private. And I'm very proud to say that Shawman High School has been the largest participant in the state in this, in this project. And again, COVID hit us right in the middle of its, if it's really grand beginning. And we have great plans. This year, we had about 106 students that were part of the journey of this from freshmen. We targeted, up until this year, it was kind of random. Kids from, you know, nine, 10, 11th or 12th grade. And then we realized, we need to build a leadership team. You work with freshmen, you develop those kids. Those kids then in turn can help you as their 10th graders with ninth grade. And if we can keep this process going, over four years, you really impact the culture of the community. So that's, that's that piece of the story. And then I guess lastly, the, we are looking at the development of Too Good for Drugs for our middle school. So there would be two programs operating. The second step as well as the Too Good for Drugs. And there's again, a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade model of that. So this is on the, the cook. Not there yet, but on the cook. Do y'all have questions? Anyone? Henry?
Very impressive presentation. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Another piece to this, ladies and gentlemen, that you need to know. I'm the cultural arts director. So I have believed my whole life that if we're asking kids to say no, we need to make sure kids have something to say yes to. And so to encourage our kids either to be involved athletically, artistically, academically, culturally, or as a, in, as a community leader, all of these things, I think, are what develop kids towards success. So there you go, folks.
Thank you. Millie?
What can we do as a board to help support you and expand programs or get you more resources? Because it's very inspiring to hear your passion for what you're doing. And I firmly believe that culture development is important to the success of students. So what can we do to help you?
Thank you, ma'am. That's a dangerous question to ask Charles. Little do you know, folks, little did she know what you asked. Let's talk. How's that? I appreciate it. You know, this is the thing. I promise you, you first encounter teenagers and they're frightening because they're going to either get crazy or they're going to back up from you. But you give them a chance and let them know that you care about them and it's magic. I promise you. Donald, is it not true? It is magic, you guys. It really is. You know, it is so fun to see the, the kid who's been a football player and he finally finishes, you know, and he's got a window of time that still exists at the end of his senior year and we convince him, let's put you on stage. And it's, it's magical, what happens. He realizes, I can do this. This is fun. All the way to the kid who, you know, has never spoken and you give them something they become passionate about. It's there. It's really there. So I appreciate the nod, but let's talk, okay? Any, anybody else?
Yeah.
Yes.
Charles, do you still do the Epic Youth presentation? Is that still part of?
Yes.
What are the items that you?
Yes, sir.
That's on your agenda?
Yep. It sure is. Matter of fact, thank you for bringing that up. There is an amazing group of people who are housed in Arizona. They were previously known as Epic Assemblies.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. Yeah, it's good. Thank you, Mr. Warner. Epic Assemblies. And they have gone through a redevelopment program that's called THA, The Mash Unit. And what they do is they come and bring a artistic methodology of a drug prevention message that, that I think embraces where kids are. When you think about what goes on musically in the world, how much music embraces kids toward violence, toward sexual abuse, toward all the things that are so destructive. And yet kids are like drawn like a moth to a light at times. And to turn that around in such a way to help reveal the darkness in that journey has been transformational. And Mr. Warner and Ms. Munt are here as, I think, evidence to be able to share. And Mr. Warner, you've seen them in action. These people just do a remarkable job. I've been pleased to be able to share them with Plaquemine Parish before COVID. And it's all about how to deliver the message. It really is. So thank you, guys. If I can, if it's okay, Ms. Vouchet. One of the things that we've talked about is the, the opportunity to bring the major stakeholders together in the community. St. Bernard is small enough and loving and caring enough to come together to look at between the, the community of faith, law enforcement, education, and civic, civic organizations to come together to look at, how can we move to the next step? That's I think, that's our next, our next opportunity. Thank you, guys, so much. I love sharing what we do.
Thank you.
Mr. Kassar, I just want to say thank you so much for your continued passion and all the hard work you, that you do with Drug-Free Schools and the programs just continue. And much appreciated. Thank you very much. And Ms. Schneider and Mr. Dewey, thank you too for your great presentations. We appreciate. It takes, it takes a team to work constructively, as you said many times, Mr. Kassar, in a constructive manner for the good of the students. So we thank you very much. And Ms. Vouchet, you're always at the helm and we, we appreciate it. And it's, it's great that the Drug-Free Schools is just continuing to build. And, and also I want to thank the Kiwanis Club. They, they have been around for many, many years with the Terrific Kids Program. And every month, they go to all of our elementary and middle and high, and in high school, a terrific teens. And so we, we appreciate there.
We're the only community in the nation that has a terrific teen component. And it goes back as far as Ms. Kelly Watson. When Kelly was applying to Loyola, she put down, she was a terrific teen.
She's now our assistant principal.
Principal, yes, indeed.
Well, we're blessed to have so many great people to work with and, and the support of our community. And again, great teachers and a wonderful administration. Thank you.
It's so important, I think, to bring the community to school. Our kids need to see community leaders, people that care about them and realizing you're only a few years away from being part of that.
And you realize the, the number of years that we have spent in building these programs. Because when you think about, and you know, we're there at the beginning, when you think about the genesis of all of this, when you started with just the Drug-Free Program, Say No to Drugs. And this has been a continuous growth of programs in our schools. And you know, like Mr. Kassar has said, you don't change attitudes with kids or people or any of us in the short term. It's a continuous building of the process. And these particular programs, when we start at the kindergarten level and go up, there is a method to this. And we'll talk a little bit more about that continuing because we have Mr. Cipollone to give his piece to this. But all of these are pieces that fit into this whole puzzle. Each one in and of itself independently would probably not be worth very much, except in a very short term. But the progression and how one builds on the other is what we have been working toward for a very long period of time. So.
And just to mention also, Mr. Warner and Ms. Munt. I mean, they have been with Shawman High School for so many years. I know Mr. Warner over 50. But they have always had the philosophy of positive reinforcement with students. And I think that's so important and, you know, for positive results. So we thank you for all your hard work. I know you don't like to get called out either, but, but they, they definitely have had that philosophy and it's a great one. Thank you.
Mr. Kassar?
Yes, sir.
When Epic Assemblies comes, please invite the board members. Do yourself a favor, go to this, go to this and watch the powerful lessons that are taught by these, by these groups. It's, and, and just look at the kids, how they're absorbing it. It, it's something to see. It really is.
You have to use the tools of the day. Does that make sense, everybody? You've got to use the tools. You've got to use the tools of the day. And that's what they do.
And you see the vast majority of our kids responding positively to all of this.
Yes, indeed.
We do have a small minority that we have other programs we need to work through. But the vast majority of our kids do the right thing and the good thing each and every day.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Kassar, for everything.
A pleasure, you guys. Thanks.
Oh, now, yeah, Joe?
Hey, everybody. I'm Joe Cipollone. For those that haven't met, nice to meet you all. I was at the Alternative School for nine years. I was a teacher, instructional coach and a principal. And now I'm a supervisor of secondary special education for the district. Okay, so my piece is similar to Mr. Kassar's. It's another proactive piece. And I think we're spending a lot of time, we're going to talk about, but talking about the proactive pieces. Because when you think of safe schools and you think of safe communities, I think, you know, you could run around and put fires out all day long, right? But I think being proactive and finding ways, when you think of those safe schools and those safe communities, when they don't even need to call the police, right? When you're not having crimes or vandalism or fights, it's because the kids, the adults, everyone in that community, everyone in that school feels attached and connected to each other, to their family, to their peers, to their teachers, to their social workers. And that's where you truly, I think, get real safety that's lasting. So I think that's why we're kind of focusing so much on these proactive pieces. So the one that I've kind of been championing and working with both at Raleigh and now for the District of Aldis Secondary in elementary schools is Trust-Based Relational Intervention. So it's short, it's T B R I. So T B R I, first I'll go over a general overview of what it is and then we'll talk about how we're implementing it in all our schools. So T B R I, Trust-Based Relational Intervention. It's trauma-informed, it's research-based, it's designed to meet the kids' needs. Our kids are coming with all, a wide range of needs and interests and some trauma. And I think, you know, schools and all levers of society are, you know, tasked with meeting kids where they're at and helping them meet their goals both in and out of the classroom. And T B R I has been a really successful way with that. So they've kind of had four main tenants of T B R I. And I'll talk about the training in a little bit, but one is the first is like the trauma-informed mindset. Having all of our adults that we work with, all of our staff members have a really good understanding of the science of how our brains work, how kids' brains work, and how trauma and stress affects those things and how that impacts how they respond or how they don't respond in certain situations. And then we kind of go into ways to connect, ways to empower and ways to correct. And those are kind of things you infuse in every single thing you do. So sometimes people, you know, will think when they hear about it, oh, it's just another extra thing we do. But you're talking to kids and you're talking to adults and you're communicating and connecting all day long. It's just how you do it. So it's nothing extra, it's just literally all we do. So what we did is we partnered with an organization called Crossroads. They are, they started off as mostly foster parents and parenting and foster parenting has very similar, every single time I've been working with them now, my first training I went to was like six or seven years ago, there's so many parallels with education and teaching and especially helping the kids that need it the most and helping the, not really need it the most, but the kids that maybe have struggled the most and haven't really found their way and haven't seen themselves as great students yet. This kind of partnership with an organization that works with foster parents. They also work with jails, juvenile centers, they work with the courts, they work with the police, they work with any kind of organization that basically works with kids. Because everyone, you know, anyone that works with kids is looking for ways to connect and get through and help kids meet their goals. And there's ways that work and there's ways that don't work. And this is one of those ways that I've found and they've found that work. All right, so we have been fully implementing Trust-Based Relational Interventions by training our staff, doing mini lessons with kids and kind of infusing it in everything we've done. At Raleigh, the Alternative School for three years now, so this is our third year doing it. Muro Elementary has been two years now. So we have fully been implementing it, full staff, powers, secretaries, admin, teachers. Everyone is understanding the science behind, you know, a brain that's experienced trauma, understanding how that might impact them and then what ways can help kids cope with those things, respond better, de-escalate when they need to de-escalate, resolve their conflicts without fighting. All of that has kind of been fully implemented at Raleigh for the last three years. We now, you know, we found success there. We found some academic, definitely some academic success. When we look at our S P S scores, our graduation, our 12th graders graduating, our culture and climate surveys, the adults we found to be happier through this training and through this way to really connect with the kids and starting with connection, kind of building out there. So we are also now doing a district-wide implementation plan. Where basically we partnered with Crossroads and they provided kind of like train the trainer, training to all of our schools. So every principal and leadership team picked like a T B R I team. That's usually either principal or assistant principal, counselor, instructional coach, maybe a teacher leader. And they've gone to four different trainings with the Crossroads team to become trainers. So basically, those four trainings were in the T B R I, Trauma-Informed Mindset, and Connecting, Empowering and Correcting. So those T B R I teams at each schools received training, implementation guidance and resources to be able to then re-deliver this at their school sites. We also have an ongoing partnership with Crossroads where they come into the schools and they spend a certain amount of time at each school a month. And they help those T B R I teams and their teachers work through different cases, work through different situations with kids or with certain classes. And then really help the T B R I leadership team continue to implement this ongoing rest of this year and going forward, where it's not just a, we do a training once in August and then we're done with it. This is an ongoing thing where they came monthly to Raleigh for three years and we saw really good, strong success. And now we're trying to replicate that, building up our own people and the capacity of our own leadership teams at each school, where they can kind of become T B R I champions, Trust-Based Relational Intervention champions. We can kind of use this trauma-informed training and tools and mindset to infuse it all among their staff. And I think it helps with behavior, it helps with cutting down on fighting, it helps with teacher retention. I think all of these things we'll see as we continue to go forward. So right now, we are in, our schools have, are either, they're basically in or complete with that implementation of the first four trainings. So all of our T B R I teams are fully trained now, they can train this, they have the materials. And now they have, are either in the process of training the rest of their staff at their school or are completely done. And now, when they're completely done with their four trainings, we also don't want to be like, all right, well, that's it. We then meet back with the T B R I team, I and then the Crossroads people are meeting with the T B R I team and saying, okay, your training now is done with all your adults in your building. What's next? What focus areas, what do we want to focus on? If we're focusing on the connecting principle, what tools of connecting do we really want to focus in on? I was also asked, definitely can share about Alternative School, which is definitely an intervention and something that is used to help kids that need a little extra support. So like I was saying, I was there for nine years. I was the principal there for the last few years, loved every second of it. You know, I think Raleigh, I really believe in Raleigh, 100%. I think it's a true alternative school where there are kids there for a lot of different reasons. Kids that made, can you guys see this? But kids that made one mistake, kids that have never been successful in a 25 or 30-person class, kids that just don't see themselves as good students, so they mess around and they misbehave, kids that are fighters. Also, there are kids there that are just behind academically and want to do some grade recovery or overage or undercredited. Some kids that are coming from a different country and might be 17 years old, but in sixth grade. Some kids that, I mean, a lot of kids, a decent amount of kids, I was trying to do the numbers, maybe like 30, 40% of kids just choose to stay. They find their success and maybe not they stay forever, but maybe they stay all the way through middle school. Or they come in 10th grade and they finish with us. So we do have a good amount of students who also choose to stay because they found some success, their family believes in the program that we have and they end up staying. So, you know, some of the services and support that we have at Raleigh, you know, it's a smaller school. We definitely do, and one of the key tenants of T B R I and Trust-Based Relational Intervention is structure and nurture. So you need to have high structure. Kids excel when you give them high expectations and you give them the structure to meet those high academic and behavior goals. So we're not, you know, you're not going to just relax and let them do whatever. You need to have high structure, but you also follow that with high nurture. You make it feel like it is, like it's fun and empowering and kids can pursue their passions and feel successful. And once kids feel successful and feel like they're great students, then they work really hard every day and don't mess around because that's what good students do. The main core of our work is helping kids that have never before felt like great students feel like great students. And then they are great students. So we have, you know, we have that structure and nurture piece pretty good. We have, you know, a hallway for middle school, a hallway for high school. You know, we watch transitions closely. Our adults are dedicated to connecting with the kids. So we get, you know, they, they know us really well and we know them really well. And we're attuned to what's going on. Academically, you know, our teachers and interventionists have really been trained on giving feedback in the moment. And we use the same curriculum, same calendar, but they use the scaffolds and some differentiation tools to help kids fill those gaps along with intervention time. But they really want to give feedback in the moment because feedback in the moment is a great way to get a kid who's struggling academically to feel like they're doing good and to keep trying. Mental health-wise, you know, we, Raleigh has a partnership with Methodist and with LSU. On Methodist, we have social workers in addition to our school's social worker and special ed. social worker. Methodist also has social workers that are onsite at Raleigh and they provide kind of that proactive therapy with the kids. We're not, we kind of protect their time, they're not putting out fires. They are providing therapy for kids that need it daily, twice a week, every single day or once a week. And then we have a partnership with LSU where we have a social worker from LSU comes twice a week, does a similar thing. And then we also have psychiatrists that meet with families and kids to talk about their needs and try to help in any way that they can. Our Methodist social workers, I really also believe in this program. Our Methodist social workers, they spend one day, so like one of them will go to one school one day. So they'll be, they'll be at Raleigh for four days. And then one day, they're at another one of our schools, trying to, one, ease the transition when kids return so they can return successfully. So if I've been successful at Raleigh, I go back to AJ, I'm still going to see my, you know, my counselor, my Methodist counselor. And in addition to, we have mentors and different other programs that we do where we meet with them once a month, even when they go back. But they'll see their counselor or their, their social worker once a week at their district school. So they go and then they also see some kids proactively if they've been struggling. Let's say they're struggling at AJ, they can kind of take on those kids too to try to put, try to stop it before they might have to come to Raleigh.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Do we have any questions? Catherine?
Thank you for the presentation. So I know that you've been a champion of the T B R I at Raleigh for years. And I love the way that you kind of demonstrated tonight how that's cascaded into these pilot groups within each of the other schools. Could you talk a little bit about training and professional development at the beginning of next school year as we are hiring new teachers and continuing to provide professional development, not just for the teachers, the lead teachers, but also para-educators, school secretaries, and how they can incorporate some of the tenants of T B R I? Will that be a part of back-to-school professional development or any summer programs for teachers?
Yes. So our, they've been doing this for years, but the T B R I, our T B R I partnership, the Crossroads people, they actually do training for our new teachers and for our teaching St. Bernard teachers. So those teachers do get that training during their onboarding. And then, yeah, what I really love about the model that we're doing where it's not just people from the outside coming in and training, is that we're now going to have team, we do have teams of three or four people at every single school that are going to be doing that ongoing training throughout. So let's say, you know, you have six new teachers at a middle school, you incorporate that into your August PD training. And then I think, you know, our big old Shumon High, I know is really planning for like, to hit the ground running, like they have small groups now, but that's a big, big staff. So you don't want to rush and then people abandon it, you want to do it the right way. They're definitely going all in this August. And, but they've done some stuff already with teachers and with their staff, some introduction stuff. And then some teachers have started championing like kind of a small pilot group. But I know schools are using their T B R I teams to plan in August to train the people that are already, that have already received the training and then new people. So we have to do both because, you know, even at Raleigh, it was three years of ongoing training because you might, you hear everything the first time, but then you might not be ready to do it yet, right? So like after a few months, you might be ready to do something that you weren't. So I think the ongoing piece is really key.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Ms. White, before we go on, we had some members of the audience who wish to speak on this item.
I want to just take a second to wrap this up and then we'll.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
No, no, that's fine. Because I know that, I had asked or gotten this team together to talk a little bit about everything from the concrete school safety plans to the actual, if you want, environmental health services or programs that we use, social, emotional, from the beginning of a child's academic career all the way through the end. To kind of put this in some type of a framework. So if we're looking at, for example, the programs, from the programmatic point of view that we first talked about, the entire process that Mr. Kassar described and Mrs. Cipollone as well is beginning with children to talk about prevention services, making good choices, foundational self-regulation, those second-step programs and lessons. And for the masses of our kids, that entire series of prevention-type programs and making good choices and as you grow, the decisions that you make, these are the things that we're trying to do all the way from kindergarten through the 12th grade. Now, along with that, one of the few school systems, I think, in the state where we do have counselors at every elementary school as well as our middle and high schools. And we have social workers, that are district-wide social workers that go among our schools. And we've also added additional staff. Where we have at middle school, we just put on in January another one that, that we can find these people. You know, the social worker that services at the middle school, the kids in crisis. And we have two additional ones at the high school who are not part of the pupil appraisal team, or the normal counselor, social workers that are in addition, you know, to their regular school counselors. So from all of those prevention services, and then when children need a little bit more intensive help, we're hoping, you know, we have the school counselors and some of those social workers to provide and work with kids either individually or in small groups. If that is a situ, if there's a situation then where children do need more intensive help, if there have been trauma situations, those individual sessions with the social workers are available. But if it's going to be some type of a long-term therapeutic service, our counselors are trained in referral services, maybe to metropolitan, private providers within our community, hopefully, and without, you know, outside of our community for those additional services. Raleigh, many people, and that's why I wanted Mr. Cipollone to talk a little bit about the program at Raleigh. You know, Raleigh is a dual program. We have children who go to Raleigh for behavioral interventions because they're not able to operate, I guess, or to work constructively in the comprehensive school and they do need more intensive intervention. We have kids at Raleigh who choose to be at Raleigh and choose to stay there because they have found a home where they feel they can be much more productive. We also have voluntary kids at Raleigh who are behind credit-wise and want to do a more accelerated pace there or potentially working toward a high set if they're coming in possibly at the age of 17, maybe from another country or something. And maybe their educational level had stopped at the sixth grade level or the fifth grade level. So we have many, many different alternative programs set up at Raleigh for children for many, in many different areas. So one of the pieces that we're talking about with mental. So one of the pieces that we're talking about with mental health services, we are increasing those services, but we think that primarily the biggest difference is going to be made each and every day from the trainings our staff is going to receive, are receiving and will continue to receive within these programs. And then for those children that need more intensive help, we have these other alternatives. And we're putting more money and more resources into that area as we speak, and we will continue to do so. The other part of this that we talked about, because people say, well, it's a more immediate thing, and our relationship with the Sheriff's Department, and I just want to expand on that a little bit. We have always had a tremendously positive and good relationship with the Sheriff's Department from day one. Um, our plans call for, but even before we formalize those plans, the SWAT team at the Sheriff's Department has trained in every single one of our schools. They have all the blueprints, the training manuals, the operational plans. They have been a part of developing that with us. Um, all of our school administrators have direct police radios from them directly to the Sheriff's Department. The SROs that we have, we started out, we have the two at Shellman High School and we have two at Raleigh. We have contracted services with the Sheriff's Department with the truancy officer who now does nothing but truancy. And at times when he's not out, he's housed at Shellman High School as an additional resource officer to help. We've also contracted services with the Sheriff's Department for residence investigations, which we had done extensively and have been reinstituted. So if he's not able, or if he's not going to be investigating any residents at the time, that's where he's housed. The dare officers, when they're not teaching, will be stationed there as well. Um, so that fifth grade group, when they're going through all the fifth grade dare program, those officers will be there. And we're going back to a single, we used to do with them that was a juvenile division. And we had a dedicated person for all school system investigations and reports and such. And we are going back to that now in cooperation with the sheriff where we have a single point of contact that all our principals will have. That person will also be housed at the high school. If there is a, an incident report or any type of investigation, it will flow through that person who will be housed there as well. So there's going to be much more of a presence there from the Sheriff's Department as well with deputies having other responsibilities, but also being housed there, like a little, I don't want to call it a substation, but a little area that they will have then to work with us in that way. The patrol division has been stopping by. We'll feed them lunch and they'll come by there at lunchtime and walk the halls and walk outside. So we have those arrangements with the patrol division with the, um, you know, with the Sheriff's Department. We're also going to institute, remember, we had the drug dog program? Um, I think when you've been reading nationally and I think another parish in another school system, you just read something where, it was in the news yesterday, I think, Ms. Lee Bowman, you sent me that article and I know some other people too and we saw it, with the increase in vaping with kids and the, um, increase in the school fighting and such. And that is happening throughout school systems all over the country at this point. When I talk with other superintendents in the state of Louisiana and in the surrounding area, those things or those incidents are increasing. And we're instituting, like we said, programs on the front end, but we also have these programs that we are beefing up as well. So the drug dogs and the ballistic dogs, you know, as they call them, there will be times randomly, we will bring them in at our high school and middle school. And we'll do that in conjunction with the Sheriff's Department. So that's already been arranged for going forward. Um, what Mr. Warner has done also at Shellman High School, we have teachers who are, on their planning periods, are taking on additional responsibilities where they are monitoring halls more closely, making sure that kids are going directly to where they're supposed to be going and not necessarily congregating in different areas. That's made a tremendous difference in the past, at least about maybe three weeks or so, I'm looking all that way, or two or three weeks that we've instituted that. So we're making those proactive steps with our law, in the short term, with law enforcement, with our own staff, and then the long-term programs that are providing more of the, um, choices for kids to make proper choices, the programs that will help them to develop their decision-making a little better. And when they don't make the decisions we need them to make, when they're doing something that is going to disrupt the orderly operation of the school, then we do have the alternative school where we're going, you know, where we place these students and, um, they will receive much more intensive help. It's not a punitive environment at all. In fact, Mr. Cipollone, I mean, he's done a tremendous job in changing and building the culture at Raleigh Alternative School. In fact, with, I think, a 10-point increase in their school performance scores and a whole lot of positive things happening there as well. So we do have alternatives for students who are not necessarily suited to do as well in our more comprehensive middle and high schools. So with that, that's kind of wrapping up that particular presentation. So if you want to move on from there.
Thank you. Back to you, Diana.
Or if you want to ask me anything else, I'd be happy to. Just to clarify, Ms. Voce, so the, excuse me, the, the three, um, additional social workers were just recently added to.
At the beginning of the, one, actually, there were two at the high school, but that was at the beginning of the school year.
Beginning of the school.
And then the middle school, two that we were in January, that we had just put on in January.
And you mentioned the dare officers who'd come for the fifth grade to teach their program. They, they're at the.
Well, when they have, when they're not actually doing the teaching, they'll be.
They'll go to the schools.
You can see them at the, at the school.
So more visibility, more, okay. More hands-on.
More hands-on, more visible presence there.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So if you recall, just prior to COVID, you and I have worked on the program to re-institute the ability for the Sheriff's Department to be able to go to our schools and just have lunch.
Have lunch.
With the students. Um, now that, you know, things are opening up again, is that something that we can consider?
Absolutely.
To, I think it's important to help build the relationship, especially even at the elementary school level, um, between our Sheriff's Department and the students and, you know, a community policing.
Right. As, as Ms. Jackson had talked about, she had come up with this idea and we talked about it and.
I think we only got to do for like a month or two.
I know. We just put it in before COVID hit and all. And we had contacted, you know, the Sheriff's Department to say, hey, deputies, on your lunch breaks, around lunch at school, drop in at any of our schools, you know, have a lunch on us and eat with the kids. So, and that was just starting to work out. Kids liked it, you know? This is starting to work out really well.
So maybe, maybe we can look at gearing that back up again.
Sounds good.
Superintendent, as we think about next year, all of the things that you're saying, I think, are steps in the right direction. Um, do you believe that we need to review any of our discipline policies, maybe with fighting and consequences for that, or cell phone use, or recording of fights and sharing those out? Anything that we can expect to look for in that regard?
The Guide to Student Conduct Committee meets every year in April. This year it's April, I forgot the exact date. I'm looking at Ms. Schneider, but, um, it should be, it will be meeting soon. It has, um, three parents on it, administrators, school administrators, teachers on it. And they'll, they look at the current, I don't think, you know, the current Guide to Student Conduct and recommend changes, and that then comes to the board in May, is, is what the normal procedure is. Now, I do think we're going to talk about, you know, you, um, we had talked about cell phone usage, and I know you had voiced concerns, as many of us have. The kids using their cell phones and social media on it is the root of lots and lots of problems that we have. Kids will say and do things over social media that they would not necessarily do in a group setting. You know, all of these programs that we've put in are designed to sit there face-to-face with each other, talk it through, work together in groups and do something positive as a group. Whereas these things, when you see even adults or kids sitting around and they could be right from each other and all they're doing is this. And the communication is really tough with it. But the root of so many of our problems, and I'll be honest, especially at the middle school level, is derived from just, you know, when Mr. Kassar says in the classroom, the rule was be nice to each other. They're not nice to each other when you read what they're saying to and about each other on this. And, um, so I know you had sent us the policy that the Lafayette School System has where if you're talking about, um, if you're using it in school or you're taking any videos or you're posting what other people are saying or doing, that there are consequences where. And those are the things that we're going to ask that committee to look at, that particular policy. The policy with the fighting at schools, the, the Guide to Student Conduct has a wide range of potent, and it's really left at the discretion for the most part of the principal of each school. When you read through the guide, there have always been fights with kids. But the type of fight is what we're looking at. Is this like something spontaneous? And, and I know people may not want to hear this, but we've all, I mean, I taught there when it was all boys and, you know, you have two boys talking about a girl, or two girls talking about a boy or whatever, and he goes up and they may start something, and then if it stops, that's one thing. Um, there are planned fights and that's a whole different arena. Or fights when kids do not stop and adults are involved and it gets, and it escalates. Those are the kinds of situations where, um, for the most part, when kids are in those types of fights, what you see is the recommendation to our alternative program. And we've had even some appeals from that around this horseshoe. But the principal then takes the action based on their decisions on what that particular one entails. So we can clean up some, they're going to look at some of that language and clean up. I think a lot of the discussion is going to be, from what I'm hearing too, and what we're talking about, is going to be built around cell phone usage, social media uses, how it affects schools and what it, and what happens because of that. So yes, we will. And that's happening this month as we reconvene that committee.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
From what I understood, uh, the proactive steps you're taking, sounds great. So as of the meeting, February 28th, when a lot of parents was here, so a lot of those steps have been taken since that meeting.
Some before and some since.
So, so basically, we can say Shellman's, talking about Shellman, that seems to be the hub of violence. So is Shellman safer today than it was February 28th due to being more people, authoritative figures? I mean, can we say that?
Okay. And, and all right, and I'm, I'm just going to make a statement because I know Mr. Warner is sitting there just dying with some of this language and the violence in the schools. The vast majority of our kids do the right thing and the good thing each and every day and don't participate in that. There is a small group, there are a small group of kids that find that that is the only way to solve their differences. So what we've put in place is, yes, we are addressing that. Yes, we're looking at that to even minimize it further. Some of those kids are no longer even at the school.
Thank you so much, Des.
And we have put those places.
Because we can only try to improve it.
Right, we can only improve it.
And it's not a fast, quick.
But I want, I want to go on the record, the good things that are happening there, the kids that are doing the right thing every day, the kids that are earning college credit and doing enrollment classes, the kids that are earning scholarships. We have posse scholars, scholarship winners. We have performing arts, unbelievable plays, athletic competitions, academic games, kids going. The vast majority of the kids are engaged in good, positive activities and do the right thing each and every day. And what we're seeing, when people post these videos, we're seeing the worst of a small group of kids. And we are taking steps. And those steps have been taken if they're causing a major disruption. Now, you know, sometimes it takes us a long time to get steps because some of these kids, and I don't know if, um, I guess I'm going to have to pick and choose my words correctly, but if some of these kids are on five oh four plans or have I E Ps, it is a whole different, um, realm of what we can do and how we can proceed. And when you see even the revised budget and you take a look at the increase in legal fees that we have, directly proportional to what has been happening with advocates and attorneys who are coming to, um, in their mind, advocate for kids who are doing the wrong things to not accept the consequences. So we are working through those and that takes us a little longer, but we're standing firm in those areas as well.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you. Diane.
We have some requests, Ms. White. We need two requests to speak on this subject. Okay, what's that? Oh, Bo. And then this one's on. On what? Oh, it goes to him. Okay. And what about this one? That goes to me? Okay, you want to do that one?
Okay, we have a request to speak, um, Bo Bowman.
I know I commonly speak here, so two things that I normally do is I attend these meetings and I attend our council meetings because this is where the foundation's laid and that's where the rest of it takes place. Um, I was very glad to hear about the operational plans in regards to hardening our facilities. If you don't know, I did that for the Archdiocese of New Orleans. I'm a retired Air Force security officer. I spent my entire time hardening facilities against possible approaches against the U.S. military. Uh, I also wrote the safety and sure first shooter plan for our Ladia Prom sucker School and for the church. Okay? So what I've heard here this evening made me very happy with the boards gone back and looked at that plan and reassured that plan. And that, and the fact that you're moving to a single point entry, uh, throughout the, throughout the school districts is a fantastic move. That, that makes my heart feel a little bit better. Uh, one of the things that I, I heard mentioned this evening and, and Ms. Voce said it, it's about a foundation of self-regulation. And I, and, and I, it hit me hard because that is something that I came here to speak about tonight because there seems to be a misunderstanding in, uh, our internet world about maybe what's really going on. And, and I would tell everyone, we need to make an informed decision. That informed decision would be that I hear that, well, our issues are based upon the fact that we have overcrowding in our schools. Okay? I hear, that's, that's the kind, the general comment that you hear. But when you look at our student-to-teacher ratio compared to the national student-teacher ratio, we are right on the mark. So we're about as averages as any other community throughout the United States. So, we're about as averages as any other community throughout the United States. But what I think some people are failing to recognize is, and Ms. Voce, you did bring up that article, that a sister parish, very close to us right now, is looking at the same type of epidemic in their schools. So, and, and I will mention it, St. Tammany Parish, we looked at recommendations for expulsion have gone from 428 to 748. That's almost doubled. Why are those the particular problems? Those problems that the administrators are highlighting are fighting, which we just talked about this evening, drug use, vaping, marijuana, and the tendency is about 80% of all the disciplinary issues that they got going are in that arena. And that was the one thing that I wanted to bring to this board's attention and speak about, was as I heard these programs about bringing in the drug dogs, doing these other things, that they're going to address, address these issues, I would say to you, spending $30 million or $40 million on, on budget in a high school, I think we need to focus on the interpart of our students and these plans that I heard this evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Mr. Rob Larson. He wants to speak on 2.2.
My name is Robert Larson, and I have two small children at LaCoste Elementary, one of whom will be attending Trist Middle next year. Even though I personally know most of the Trist staff and consider them to be top-quality educators, I still struggle with thoughts of unease about my child's journey. Security plans regarding active shooter scenarios and entryway security are certainly necessary in today's climate, but please forgive me if I personally feel as though my child is more likely to get beat up or bullied at school rather than shot. I feel as though this board's chosen administration has failed to provide our district staff with the proper tools to adequately respond to growing emotional needs in our student population over the course of several years. We have found ourselves in a situation where our high school is understaffed given the current need, and transition throughout the building is poorly planned. Our other school buildings do not have enough subs, aides, nor counselors. Our paras are overworked, and our employees lack the relevant professional development needed to be dealing directly with low-income children of trauma for years now. A district-wide exploration into TBRi is wonderful, but only expanding it now after a full year of aggression is too little, too late. The lack of action in the past has damaged generations of our children. In the name of funding, our attendance and discipline numbers have been intentionally misrepresented to the state, effectively handicapping our own disciplinary staff over the years. We should have had the sheriff involved in these activities all along, and the hurt our community children have suffered in their absence is unforgivable. Our superintendent has previously sat on this panel before herself, prompting us a DSDA involvement, and has delivered none in the past. What will be different about this time? When our currently handicapped disciplinary teams do face an incident today, a pervasive culture of victim blaming infects the investigations. As we parents can only pray that changes going forward, we wonder what the commitments will be. In today's news, we even have a public guilty plea regarding an incident this board's chosen administration cleared internally. Is there going to be an apology for that misjudgment, and an effort to reclaim the dispersed funds? This situation has not only cost our community dollars, but our collective trust in our district's internal operations. This school year has been one of the most violent our community has ever seen, but the problems have been building internally for years. It is clear that this board's chosen administration has no ethical compass, and has unfortunately been primarily consumed with spin in the past, rather than the safety and emotional development of those most innocent in all of this, our St. Bernard Parish children. I encourage each board member to do a few things for our community. Meet with your principals to discuss their needs directly. Strongly consider expanding budget items targeted at emotional health of our children. And please consider to bring the unfortunate reality to bear that it may be time for a new superintendent to help. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Back to you, Diane.
Did, did we have, we had another request?
That was 5.2.
Okay. All right, thank you. All right, next item on the agenda, personnel items. And in your folder, you see the personnel changes. And we do have one retire, well, two retirements. Ms. Yvonne, oh, there you are, Ms. Pritchard. When I saw you, Ms. Ben's name on here, it's like, oh, she's, I don't know how many years she's been with us, but she's been with us quite a long time. It's been wonderful.
We met with her the other day, and tried to, you know, we don't want to leave.
We cried together with. Yvonne Ben is like an institution here, in St. Bernard Parish. And all, all I can remember is when after, well, one of the things that I can really remember about her, after Katrina hit, and we quickly, within 11 weeks, the first school that came into being in the metro area, we were out there that first day and every day just welcoming those kids into our trailer school, and there's Yvonne with that big old smile, and greeting every kid who came there with us, every kid as they got off our bus, or out of their parents' car. And you talk about a, a kid-oriented person, and who always, always looked after the best interests of children. I mean, she is just a wonder. And as, as I sat with her, and she came to talk with me, she says, "I know you're going to try and talk me out of it." I said, "Well, yeah, I would, I'd like you to stay." She says, "Well, she'll still be around, and she'll still come to help." So, wonderful, wonderful lady, and she's going to be a very, very difficult to try to replace.
She promises to, to be around when we need her, but she'll be missed. And we also have Cynthia Pentney, a cafeteria manager, who is retiring. They're both retiring at the end of the school year. She came and talked with us for about an hour. It was very hard to come to that decision, but she decided that it was time, so. And if you, if you look at our personnel changes, there are not many this time, but we are very busy in personnel right now. We are just finishing up with transfer day, a few more days of organizing that, and then we will go into job fair, which will be Saturday, May 13th. And I want to help Ms., I want to thank Ms. Voce, and Ms. Holton, and Ms. Snyder for their guidance, as I do this for the first time, my first year as personnel director. But it's been pretty exciting, and we do have more applications than we think we had last year. So, we're getting some interesting applications, some from out of state, some from Jefferson, some from some of the colleges, so we're pretty excited. Any questions?
Did you have a question? Okay. Just, just again, I want to thank Ms. Yvonne Ben for her so many years of service to us, and I wish her a very happy retirement. She will be missed. And also, thanks to Cynthia Pentney. We appreciate all her hard work and the many years she's been with us, and we want to wish Cynthia Pentney also a happy retirement. Thank you. And the job fair, where is that going to be located, for the public?
At Shell Med Elementary.
At Shell Med Elementary.
Yeah, training center.
Saturday, May 13th, right?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Great job.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is Finance Committee, Ms. Lee Bowman.
Section number 4.1, results of the RFP for ELA workbooks correlated to Louisiana Students' Standards for Grades 2nd through 5th Grade. Ms. Lee.
Hello again. We got our RFP request for proposals, and the first one was the ELA workbooks. And if you look at the second sheet, only two companies gave us a quote, and the first one was Curriculum Associates, and the second one was Mastery Education. They were both very excellent books, I have to say that. They were two very good supplemental books, but where Curriculum Associates won the bid was on their price. They were $1,295, and the other one was $1,695. So, it was kind of a no-brainer at that point. But they were both excellent. I think we're going to try to use some of the books from Mastery Education for some of our summer program, too. So, that might, you know, help us a bit. The second one is the library proposal. I had three librarians, Lucy Alfonso, Kelly McCartney, Carthy, and, and.
Donna Torres.
Who?
Donna.
Donna, I'm sorry, so, Donna Colada. Okay, and they came in, they evaluated the library proposals, and notice that Folet, Junior Library Guild, Mackin, Hermabound, and Reading Warehouse all submitted quotes, and they liked Mackin and Folet, and some of them liked Mackin better than Folet. This is the combined sheet, and they actually tied, so we're going to use both of these companies for our library program. So, that, like, if the, the middle school likes one, and the elementary school likes another one, but that's where they ordered their books from. Any questions?
Anybody have any questions from the board? Do you have a motion?
I will make a motion that we, for 4.1, move the recommendation of Ms. Holton to the.
And I'm sorry, Donna, I know who you are, if you're listening.
And that was Curriculum and Associates.
Ms. Lamoyne? And can I have Ms. Jackson's second? Please vote on the board.
Motion passed, it's eleven, Chair.
And then, 4.2. And then, we also have, I need a vote on the 4.2, the results of the RFP for the library books for vendors also. Do we, do you have a motion?
I have a motion. For the library books acceptance, since the two companies tied, Folet and Mackin, I make a motion that we accept the two lowest bids and the highest scored rankings by Folet and Mackin.
All right. We have a motion by Ms. Dyson, and second by Mr. Long. Please vote on the board.
Motion passed, it's eleven, Chair.
All right, so we have 4.3, permission to solicit RFP for auditing services. Mr. Fernandez.
Thank you. Periodically, we'll go out and request proposals to provide auditing services to the board, and that entails doing the annual fiscal audit of the system, both the regular audit, the single audit, as well as doing the statewide agreed procedures required by the legislative auditor. So, we're asking for permission to request proposals for auditing service for the next three years, with an option for an additional three years. Annual option to renew for additional three years, pass the initial three-year term.
Do you have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the recommendation.
I have Mr. Long. Anybody a second? Mr. Warner, a second? Please vote on your board for me. Any discussions, any questions for Mr. Fernandez?
Motion passed, it's eleven, Chair.
All right, 4.4, permission to solicit RFP for disaster restoration and recovery services.
Yes, this is a request for proposals for companies to provide disaster restoration recovery. In the event of a disaster, we oftentimes have to call in. Companies provide professional services for cleanup, mine and restoration of things. And this is something that we're required to do in order to be eligible for FEMA reimbursement for those services. So, we're asking for permission to go out and advertise for proposals to provide these services.
Any questions from the board?
Mr. Fernandez, you said this is something we're required to do?
Well, in order to be eligible for FEMA reimbursement, we have to go through an advertisement pro, we have to go through a procurement process. So, what we're going to do, we're going to hope that we don't need to avail ourselves of these services. We have to go through a process to select a company to provide them at a reasonable rate, in order to be eligible to get reimbursement from FEMA in the future.
And what this does is, if something would happen where we would need the services, we could immediately get them on, because we'd have an existing contract. Otherwise, we would have to, at that point, go through a process, for it to be FEMA reimbursable. And that, whatever, whoever that company may be, it's going to be written in, in the RFP, in case we, you know, there's.
Yes, ma'am, it'll be.
We don't pay them anything unless.
It'll be a requirements contract. When we require the services, we will request that.
Thank you, and God forbid, hopefully, we won't need it.
Do we have any more questions from the board? Questions, comments?
I'll make a motion that we send it to the full board.
We have Ms. Lamoyne. And Ms. Jackson, second. Please vote on your board for me.
Motion passed, it's eleven, Chair.
So, we have 4.5, 2022-2023 Revised General Fund and Special Revenue Fund budgets.
Okay, in your package, you have our latest budget revision, proposed budget revision for the General Fund and Special Revenue Funds. There's several exhibits. First, there's a memo, just that basically tells what changes are happening in the budget, the major changes. Exhibit one is a summary, which shows total revenues, total expenditures, and proposed or projected ending fund balances in the General Fund. Exhibit two is a detail of the revenues, projected revised budget. And exhibit three is a proposed expenditures. And exhibit four is the Special Revenue Funds budget. These are the Special Revenue Funds. Now, we've seen the budgets in the past, the Special Revenue Funds. These are the Special Revenue Funds that require an adjustment, because either allocations have changed, or revenue projections have changed, so that. So, looking at the first example, we're showing a projected revenues of $88,754,826, projected expenditures of $92,546,677. Now, expenditures are higher than revenues, because as you recall, in the fall, we added in prior encumbrances into our budget levels that were encumbered in the fund balance last year, to be appropriated in the current year. We have other sources and uses of funds, indirect costs, transfers to other funds, and transfers to other agencies, which we're required to do by law. And ending fund balances at the bottom. So, the detail of those numbers of revenues and expenditures are in the next two exhibits. The main increases in revenues all have to do with ad valorem taxes. We had a slight increase based on the taxable assessed value of property for 2022, and we have increased sales taxes, because recent collections, we have collections through January in hand. And looking at the trends for the year, and projecting out for the rest of the year, we feel confident that we can increase sales tax, expected sales tax revenues by $3 million for this current year. There's an adjustment to the MFP, to revise it to our exact, to our final allocation for this year, and those are the major changes in the revenues. The expenditures, the major changes, reflect the proposed supplement for all employees of $2,000 for all teachers and related personnel, and $1,500 for support people with the related benefits. And then, we also have made some minor changes to utilities, to increase a little bit based on current trends. But I'd be happy to answer any questions on the General Fund.
Before y'all ask questions, and I want to just emphasize, and, you know, I know David's very matter-of-fact, and businessperson here as well, but the, with the federal funding, as we talked about last year, we're able to move some expenditures to those ESER funds, plus we get a significant indirect cost coming back to the General Fund. And last year, we made the decision, or you made the decision, to pass that along to our full-time employees who have been with us all year, in, in the term of. our full-time employees who have been with us all year, in the term of, in the form of a one-time supplement, where we did $2,000 for every certificated employee, $1,500 for every support employee. We're able to do the same thing this year with those federal funds. So if y'all approve the revision in the budget tonight, that would mean then all of our full-time employees will receive again the one-time stipend of the $2,000 for certificated employees and $1,500 for support employees. Actually, at the regular meeting, if you approve it, it's just a committee meeting.
And if it's, if it's going to be approved, when is it going to be dispersed, David?
It will be dispersed at the, well.
Well, it depends. It'll either be, we want to make sure everybody finishes out the year. So it'll either be the last paycheck in May or the first one in June.
Okay.
Be at the end of the year.
Any more questions from the board?
I do have a couple of questions for you. One of them is, obviously, we'll be doing some deficit spending. At what point in the deficit spending would we impact our bond rating? I know we need to have at least a 20%.
It's not really deficit spending because these are encumbrances at the end of last year that were really, things that were obligated in the prior year from last year's revenues that were reincumbered in the current year. They weren't completed, they were ordered, things that were ordered, contracts that weren't completed at the end of the year. So we take the, we put those monies into the fund balance and then reappropriate them in the new year. So if you look at our original budget, it was pretty much a balanced budget.
Right.
When we did the budget revision, we went and added in those prior year encumbrances so that those monies would be re-appropriate in the current year and incorporated into the budget. So even though expenditures are greater than revenues, it's really not deficit spending. The funding agencies understand that. They'll look at our original budget where we don't have the encumbrances in yet because we haven't closed out our year.
Right.
And they'll see, we'll explain that to them, and they'll.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That's great. And then, and this is probably more a superintendent question, but it might be a both of you question. So we're offering.
I'll defer to superintendent.
We're offering the stipends to our full-time individuals who have been with us for a year. Is that a July 1 start? Is that a 10/1 start? What is considered a full year?
It depends on if they're a nine-month or 12-month employee. So then, and if, for example, if we started, and I forgot the start date for the beginning of the school year, y'all probably know it back there, but say, let's just say it was August 3rd, you know, and they came in sometime, it was 2nd? Judy? Jan, Jessica? Okay. So, all right, let's say it was August 2nd, and they came in sometime during the month of August as we got settled, or early September, we look at that as here the whole year. If they were here a half a year and are still with us, like the second half of the year, then we prorate.
So they will be eligible.
But someone who is here, say, the first half, or left us already, no. So they have to be currently working for us and have been here either the full year or half a year.
So it will be prorated? That was my question, is that those folks will receive.
Yes, yes. But they have to currently be with us. They couldn't have left at midterm.
Okay. And then my last one is, I know that earlier this fall, our subs who are paid on a daily rate came before the board asking for an adjustment, and I know that that's not currently in this revision. Is there any opportunity within this space to give them something as a show of good faith that we support them, we believe in them, and that we want to give them what is really due, right? They're obviously very important to us, they do a lot of good work for us, and to recognize them for that work, understanding that inflation has impacted everyone, and recognizing them and others like them within the school district for their work.
Well, we would have to, if we did something like that, it'd be a huge proration because these people are day-to-day subs, so they're not working. Some work more than others. We are looking at, along with the employee contract for full-time people, looking at hopefully raises for next school year, at which point we're looking at raises in that substitute realm as well.
So can we, can we, I know we can't guarantee, but can we commit really strongly to the idea of improving that rate for our daily rate of subs?
Oh, we're definitely going to improve the sub rate for this coming year. No question about it.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Any more questions from the board? Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, please.
I'll make a motion to recommend the, recommend this to the full board, the adoption of the budget.
I have Mr. Long. Ms. Jackson, second. Can I have you all, please vote on the board.
Mr. Rodriguez, the motion passes. Let it go.
Thank you, Mr. Rodriguez.
So item number 5.1 is an executive committee, and it's for consideration of a board retreat. Think, Ms. Harris, you put this on the agenda? Would you like to discuss this?
Sure. I really enjoyed my opportunity at LSBA to learn more about serving on a public board. As a charter school leader, I sit more in an executive space and not so much in the board space. And I know how important the board retreats are for our school board. I would really love to have the opportunity to work with our current board members as a new board member, and learn more about the process, really review the strategic plan, what are we doing, how are we moving in that direction, and just be able to become one with the voice of the school district and the school board. And I feel like a retreat would be great for that. LSBA definitely recommends that you do retreats as a board. And I think it would be wonderful for the three of us new folks to be kind of brought in in that way, and talk to Catherine about it. I would love to see it hosted at Nunez, if at all possible, so that we can see the good work that Nunez is doing, and we can be a good partner with them, and give them some love and some attention, and learn about the programs that they provide our students. So that's why I was requesting it. As a new board member, I would just like to get better at my job.
Okay. Thank you. Any, any discussion? Mr. Long?
Let's see, I think the, in all my years on the board, I think we had one retreat, and I think that was when Frank Otter was the superintendent. It goes back quite a few years.
Like an overnight retreat. But we've had day retreats before, we call it retreats, but day, we've had many of those day-long informational sessions on many of the aspects of the school system.
And is there a cost?
But we have not gone overnight anywhere in years.
Okay. So it wouldn't be, the cost would be minimal, then?
If we did a day retreat.
One day?
Whatever y'all like.
I, I would want to see a day retreat. I mean, I'd love to spend a weekend with y'all, but I know that we are all very busy, and I think a day retreat would give us a good opportunity to really review that plan, and where are we on that plan, and understand the vision that the superintendent has for the school district, and our part in that vision, and just be able to, you know, start the new year with a cohesive plan of moving forward.
Okay. Well, I think I could probably go along with that, since the, wouldn't be a cost of meals and hotel accommodations or nothing like that, so.
I have a quick question.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Catherine.
I'm sorry. Ms. Voce, you might be able to enlighten us, too, on what are the, since we're, you know, a public voting body, what are the requirements for, if we would get together for a meeting like this in terms of rules and regulations for open meetings?
It would be an open meeting.
Okay.
Public meeting. With the same rules and regulations that would apply to any public meeting that we would have.
So I'm not opposed to this. I just think it's premature. I think that the board, the new members, I think they should get at least, at least a year underneath their belt. I mean, we haven't even done the community awards, which is Thursday night. Graduation is a whole other realm of events that have to be done, the summer program, the opener of school, you know, so I, I, I'm not opposed to it. I just think it's premature. I'd like to see it maybe toward the end of the year or the beginning of next year, so everybody has a whole year together, you can see kind of what's on an agenda for a whole year. And at that point, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to it at all. I'm more like three hours instead of a whole day, to be honest with you. I've spent a lot of time doing strategic retreats.
Yeah.
Got the whole day in and walked away with very little. So I think if we had a concise agenda on what we wanted to cover in a three or four-hour period, that's, that's what I would favor. So that's, that's my opinion of it. All right? Yes, yes, ma'am. Ms. Rodney?
I don't, I don't think it's premature, being a new board member. I do think there are things that we kind of came in learning, hit the ground running and learning, and it's a constant learning thing all, all the time when we come in. I think a retreat will allow it to slow down, where we actually are grasping more of what it is that, you know, we do, learning the culture of the board a little bit better. I think if you wait a year, then there'll be further drift apart, and then I won't need a retreat. And three hours would disminimize it, that's like going to a meeting. A retreat is really more of, and correct me if I'm wrong, Millie, retreat is more of a social interaction. We are, you know, 11 different personalities working together for the greater good. So learn, that's your opportunity to learn that person's personality, to learn kind of exactly how they move, to understand, like, when things come out, what exactly is the intention? So I mean, I don't agree with it being, it being premature, I think it needs to happen, and I don't agree with it being three hours.
Okay. Anybody else? Ms. Jackson?
So I think, you know, when you come onto a new board, there are multiple opportunities throughout the first year to meet with your fellow board members, as Sean said, the banquets and graduations, and, you know, to allow those relationships to grow organically. Trying to force people into a room, it's, I don't think it's going to help a relationship building situation. There was a specific issue that needed to be addressed, or as a board that we needed to discuss. I think I would feel differently, but it seems like this is just trying to inorganically force a situation. You know, we have the legislative day coming up at the beginning of May that several of the board members will be attending, and, you know, I would suggest taking those opportunities to get to know your fellow board members and, you know, have conversations with us.
Yes, ma'am.
I'll be honest, I mean, again, yes, it is about getting to know you all, but for me, it really is about getting to know the work of the board. And a strategic plan that has an end date of 2026, as a board member, I don't want to wait a year. I mean, I can, and I gladly will sit with the superintendent and review that, but this is work to me that is important, and the school district is important, and the students every year are important. And, you know, I, I'll be honest, I was elected for four years. I don't know that I'm going to do it again in four years because I'm here to serve and get things done. And if I'm not in the right spot, then I want to let somebody else who can give the time to do the work, do the work. If I wait till next year, 25% of my time on this board is done. What have I done for my community if I'm not spending the time knowing the work? And that's part of the reason why I felt like it would be a good thing. And I'm not offended if we don't have it, I don't take it in any way as it's not a good thing or not a bad thing. I just know, as somebody who loves working in education, and that may be part of it, right? This is what I do every day, being with you all to look at that plan and hear from the superintendent exactly how we're going to accomplish all of that work, and what does she need from us and from the community to get it done, is just inspiring to me and makes me feel like this is something that we can really do and change lives and support teachers and support kids. So for me, that's what I was hoping to get out of it, is really being able to do what you all did when you developed the plan. We weren't here for that. So we are coming in on the back end. And being able to understand that and get ingrained in it and embrace it and support it is important to me. So that's really what I was looking for.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am. Ms. Lamoyne?
So since we may have some differing opinions about how the retreat would take place, what exact bullet points we would include on this, would it be prudent then, before we took a vote on it tonight, to maybe have some discussion and gather some feedback from the board members about what everyone would see as the most meaningful way to set this up? Whether or not, you know, a full day, a half day, exactly what items we would want to include as far as, you know, some of the suggestions tonight with strategic plan? I just, since we might have different opinions about what would actually take place at the retreat, should we maybe gather some, some input from everyone and just table this to the next meeting to take a vote?
I like that idea. Again, I mean, I do agree with Ms. Jackson that you don't want to force somebody into doing something. To me, this is an opportunity to embrace the work that we have, and I would want everybody coming to the table with that thought process of how do we embrace this work and embrace working together and working with the district to make it the best district in the state? Because I believe that we have that opportunity. We have one of the most dynamic superintendents in the state, and we should be the most dynamic district in the state. So how do we do that, and how do we, as a board, do that?
Okay. So if I'm hearing correctly, we have a motion to table and to further discuss.
And to be clear, yeah, I don't want to table just to, you know, prolong and kick this down the road. What, you know, I'm hearing is that there are, there are folks that want to have some really structured discussion, you know, about things like the strategic plan. But I think if we could take some time before the next meeting to maybe flesh that out, then the full board would feel more comfortable voting, so.
So why don't you just send, send the item to the full board without a recommendation?
Perfect. I'm, I'm comfortable doing that. I will make that motion to.
I mean, next one.
Yes.
So we have a motion by Ms. Lamoyne to send this.
To the full board without a recommendation.
Without a recommendation. Do we have a second? Second about Ms. Rodney? All in favor of sending this to the full board without a recommendation? Vote in the machine.
Motion passes. Let it go.
All right. We'll go on to item 5.2, discussion of public comment at board meetings. And I do have a couple of speakers, but I guess we'll have our discussion first before we get to speakers. So I know, Mr. Rodriguez, this was an item that you asked to think be placed on the agenda?
Yeah, I'd like to, I think it would be to the best interest of everybody that people are allowed to come into meetings and, and speak. Everybody's been, you know, pretty respectful when they come speak. They want to hear their voices heard, listen to them, and if we do a great job, they won't have anybody coming to see us. So I'd like to take a vote on that and see what happens.
Okay. Do we have any other discussion? Mr. Long?
I guess to, I'm trying to understand your, your suggestion, Mr. Rodriguez. Are you suggesting adding back a community concerns agenda item?
People.
To our either committee meeting or?
I guess.
Or regular meeting?
A certain time, like y'all used to do it years back, you said, right, Mr. Long?
Yes, yes. We had an item of community concerns, but we, we removed it several years ago on advice of our attorney, Mr. Bob Hammond with the LSBA. It was a strong opinion. He suggested that we don't have a actual agenda item because he's, he handles. suggested that we don't have a actual agenda item because he's, he handles many, many court cases where there was problems with people coming and speak on things that are not on the agenda. So, I think we should think long and hard before we add it back.
Well...
Millie? Ms. Harris, I'm sorry.
Sure. Thank you. So, I mean, I, I agree with you, Henry. I know that in other school districts, they use a public comment section at the end of their meeting for the public to make general comments about items that are not on, on the agenda. It allows everything from a parent to come and bring their concern about a bus stop if it's not listed on the agenda to, you know, coming in and just telling you how fantastic of a job their, you know, paraprofessional is doing with their special education student. So, I understand your concern, Mr. Long. I can see where it could create situations where you have individuals who are not here for constructive support. But I think that it becomes a decorum opportunity in ensuring that we are giving folks the opportunity to speak and asking folks to be respectful and not letting folks use that as a space to be disrespectful and, and really giving them an opportunity to share their concern. It's great to see folks at the meeting. I know we don't always have a lot of attendance. I don't know that this will bring more people to the meeting, but at least they will know that if they come to the meeting and they have a concern that they want to raise, that they have a place in which to do so and do so publicly.
Mrs. Dyson?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Um, yes, Mr. Long, we were, uh, did get a recommendation from Bob Hammond and the LSBA to remove that item off the agenda. But, we also created a mechanism where the public could come before us under a request to appear, and they could request to appear, and they would, and they would actually let us know what they wanted to speak about. And we could gather the information that they were interested in or they had questions for. And we, we've always had a good channel of communication. And, you know, as far as coming to talk about a student or a, you know, or a teacher or an individual, we, we were, we were told not to allow just them to come and blurt out, you know, come and, you know, complain about individuals because they have had many, many lawsuits. And if, if we knew that a constituent or an employee had an issue, we could add that item to the agenda. We could gather the information on that interest or that problem. And then we could resolve it in that way and it would be more proactive and not, you know, in a negative way. You know, we're here to work cooperatively together for the better of our students and for the good of all. And, you know, we do have that mechanism in place. And at any time, if there's any issue that could be an emergency or something that we needed to act, you know, very quickly on, we, we also have the right to vote on it that night and change the, the rules and the, the procedures that we had, had made in place. And there was a good reason for that. So, thank you.
You're welcome, Mrs. Dyson. Anybody else? Yes, Ms. White?
Yes, my opinion on it is we already have something in place. Everything has to have rules and regulations. And you just can't let somebody get up here and suppose they say something about another child, mentions a name or something. We don't know what they're going to get up and say at this point. But, I, I mean, I would like the parents to participate. And just like we do have an agenda now, and they can tell us what they want to speak on. And then, I think three minutes is just a little bit too, I think maybe five minutes, we, we could add on to that time at that time. You know, give them five minutes to speak instead of three minutes. I don't know where the three minutes came from, but I mean, something like that. And that way, we kind of, you know, hitting it both ways that way. Giving them the opportunity to speak and wanting them to speak. But we have to protect our children. I'm here to protect our children too. So, we can't just let anybody mention a name. We have to have some kind of rules set in place where they get up and speak and know what they're, you know, obligated to say, you know, what they can and can't say. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Mr. Rodriguez?
A couple of meetings ago, they had a young lady came here. She wanted to speak. And she sat through the whole meeting in some kind of way, but she must have been missed. I think she told me she filled out one of the little, little, remember well? So, some kind of way she was, she was looked over and she sat through the whole meeting. I don't know how that happened, but I'm sure, you know, we can, you know, that won't happen again. But, let, let's just say, somebody for the sake of an argument, not that anybody would do this, so we don't put it in place that they can come speak because of what the, a lawyer said. And he's a very smart lawyer, I'm sure, protecting everybody. Well, somebody could fill out, if they had a really axe to grind, they could fill that thing out and say, "I'm coming to talk about safety." They can get up there and grind a teacher, and there's nothing we can do about it. You know, if that was to happen, not that it would, but it could be. So, there's really not a lot of difference between just having an open meeting where they get a little certain time, whatever part of that meeting y'all thinks best, and let them talk. You know, if somebody wanted to get around that, they could, basically. So, I think there should be an open meeting. And, you know, I guess I want a motion to vote on it. If I get a second, we vote on it. If not, we don't.
I'll second you.
Any other discussion?
What's the motion?
No, have open, uh, open time for people to come here and speak, for comments.
Any other discussion?
Yes, I do.
Casey, I don't think, have you...
You go ahead.
What I, um, what I, and what, um, Mr. Rodriguez had brought up about the young lady, um, when she filled out the card, I think the problem lies in, um, the public doesn't always know the proper procedure. Um, the young lady did say she emailed and she tried to get it put on the agenda. And after talking to her, like, the email, kind of, I think, it went in the right direction, but it went everywhere. So, I know we have it on our website. And we automatically think people are tech savvy, people are going to have time to read the website. And no, I think it's like a hidden jewel. If the public knew the proper procedure, then it would have emails coming in to Ms. Voshe to get it put on the agenda. And then you have like you had today, everybody was allowed to speak on the topic because it was already on the agenda. I think the thing is, stuff happens in our school system. And parents have a right to get, you know, upset or a little concerned about it, and they want to come in and have an outcry. But, the problem is, they don't know the proper procedure in order to hear, to be able to speak. So, I don't know how, but beyond the fact that it's on the website, to maybe get it to our parents to know that, hey, first you request for it to be on the agenda. And then, I'm assuming you get an email back and saying it's on the agenda, or you look for when the agenda is posted. That way you can come and make your comment. Because if not, then they're left at the mercy of the board to have to make a motion for them to speak. And if we don't make a motion, it just kind of creates a, a more divide between the board and the parent. And that's something I know, me being a new board member, I've been on that side. I don't want the divide. And I felt that where I wasn't able to speak because it wasn't on the agenda. So, I think it's just the educating of the parents will make it, you know, more, you know, probable that they can come here and say, "Okay, it's on the agenda. I get to speak on it." So, that's my thoughts on it.
Thank you, Ms. Rodney. Mrs. Dyson?
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Yes, um, you know, I, I'm sure every board member around this horseshoe has had complaints or calls or issues of parents, teachers, about a child. Um, my first question is always to them, have you spoken, if it's about a child and a teacher, have you gone through the proper channels of communication? Have you talked to the teacher yet? Yes or no? Have you, has, you know, if you weren't happy with that, did you ask for a meeting with the teacher and the principal? And then go up the line. But, and that's why, another reason why we, um, you know, have these policies in place. Because there are proper, proper procedures and ways to find out information about an issue and, you know, and address it. And if they're not pleased with the, you know, um, meeting they may have with the, the teacher and the principal, and then, you know, you could take it up to the superintendent and to the board, you know. But, I, I just think we, you know, we have a procedure in place as it stands now. This board also has a right at any time to suspend the rules and allow audience participation, you know, if there is, again, a, a topic of conversation that is very pressing time-wise and, um, you know, interest-wise. So, I just think, I know that, I guess from my experience on the board and, you know, and knowing that we made this policy for a reason, it still allows the public to speak whenever they wish to, if it's a pressing issue that needs to be made in a timely manner. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Plus, we will, we can have the, get the information that they might be having a conflict with and, and have the answers for them to resolve it. Thank you.
Okay, anybody else? So, okay, Mr. Long, yes, sir?
One suggestion. I agree with Mr. Dyson. That's exactly what I was going to say. Anyone can come up here and have a gripe about a teacher or principal and sometimes make some scandalous accusations. And these people are not here to defend themselves. And, uh, and we have many, many avenues where people can come to the board. And they can talk to a board member if they want to talk, put, have something put on the agenda. Here's, uh, we have the card system that we instituted. So, uh, and like you said, Mr. Dyson, we, I don't think anyone's asked to address the board. And we told them, no. I can't remember that. Uh, so, I would be against this motion. Thank you.
All right, so, we have some, some speakers?
You have, you have comments?
I know. I was asking, are you making a substitute motion?
Do we really need a substitute motion? I mean, I don't think, if we vote down the original motion. So, we ready for public, for, all right, so, Mr. Larson, you wanted to speak on this item?
My name is Robert Larson. Again, for the second time this evening, uh, I want to just thank Mr. Rodriguez for putting this item on the agenda. It took a great amount of courage to do that. As you can see, it's a very sensitive issue. Uh, I'd like to remind all of you guys that you're elected officials and you serve the public. You make decisions for the direction of the school system, but you are here to serve the parents and the community. And you should be obligated to listen to whatever they have to say to you. The unfortunate reality of our day is you can ignore an email and you can ignore a phone call. And those are both private communications between one-to-one individuals. And nobody will ever know if you ignore it. It also is a hindrance to public transparency when you can only come to comment on items that are specifically addressed on the agenda. Because if the public has an issue, the board can simply not place it on the agenda. And it is out of context and not actionable as a communicative item. Um, there are several parishes in our immediate area that allow public comment. Significant research shows that it is much more effective to occur at the precipice of a public meeting rather than the ending of a meeting. Obviously, nobody can force you to reply. But, as an elected official, you should be obligated to listen. Several concerns were brought up about legality. You can very easily prepare a policy and have people sign away any kind of rights or conditions. Or they could be actionable for the things that they say if they don't follow the rules. I think we have shown as a community that we try to be respectful of the rules that are placed before us, the time that's allotted to us. And we try to stay quiet when you are speaking. And honestly, I just believe it's an obligation for you to hear the public. And this measure should be added back to the agenda at every meeting. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Lance Rodney.
Good evening, board. Um, public comment is a very, very important, uh, subject to the community and myself. Um, we have the privilege, that's one of our only privileges we have to speak to you all. And we need that opportunity to come and address our concerns about any situation that we may have, even though you guys might not like what we say. You might not like the, the comments or the expressions. But we do have that right. It's our First Amendment right. And whoever the lawyer is, Mr. Long, I would love to speak with him and address that to him. Um, your policy is a good policy. However, there's some tweaks that could be tweaked. I mean, some recommendations, I think, Mr. Larson, he had a lot of good points about the, uh, the policy. But, giving the public five days to make a recommendation and then for you guys to vote on it, what if, what if you say no? I mean, that's, that's avoiding, that's denying us the right to speak. We should be able to speak on any topic, you know? Um, we have, uh, for it to be placed on the agenda, it takes what? The public has 24 hours to look at the agenda? We need more than 24 hours to look at the agenda to, in order to speak on something. We can't just pick up it and just, hey, I want to speak on this. I don't know anything about the topic. I need some more information on it. I need to redo some research. I don't have enough time. Well, you guys have a lot of time to speak on, I mean, look at certain documentations and then come to the board meetings and make your recommendations and pass a motion. But we need enough time to come and make our point. I like Ms. Roseland's recommendation on giving extra time for five minutes. That will be feasible. Five minutes will give us enough time to express our thoughts. And I think a lot of, um, concern with the lawyer was probably talking about because it's on public record. It's on public record for a reason. That's for clarification and validity. We need that for the public. We can't, we can't deny the public. The public is our main concern. And it seem like you're deflecting and avoiding the public. That is the problem. I, I agree with Robert Wuza Board, Ms., Ms. Voshe, I, I agree with that. But, but we also have to let the public share their concerns. You can put in place stipulations, like you said, sign away of it. If, if you say something out of order, you, you'll be held liable, uh, for, you know, some kind of judicial issue. But we need to have public comment. It was all like, Mr. Long, you said, it was on there a long time ago. I remember that. I used to pop in and out of these meetings. That public comment was at the end of, I believe, the roll call, maybe. And then you expressed, "Do anybody have public comment?" So, I think that that should be a general item on every meeting. Period. Thank you for your contribution.
Thank you, Mr. Rodney. All right, so, item 5.2, discussion of public comment at board meetings. We have a motion by Mr. Rodriguez to add public comment back to our agenda. We have a second by Ms. Harris. All in favor? Vote in machines.
Okay, Ms. Bertha. There'd be four yes. One, two, three, four, and seven no.
All right. Mrs. Dyson, back to you.
Thank you, Mr. Warner. Next item on the agenda is superintendent's notes.
Uh, we talked about a lot tonight. I just want to remind, um, everyone in our school community of the banquet Thursday night, where we will recognize all of our teachers of the year, students of the year, support personnel of the year, volunteers of the year, retirees. It's always a very, very, very nice event. And, um, we hope to see, you know, the people who will be honored there, along with all of the administrators and school people. And for Thursday night at 6:30 at Schumett High School, doors open And Thursday night at 6:30 at Shelby High School, doors open at 6:00. And program starts at 6:30 at the Ninth Grade Academy at Shelby High School.
Anyone else?
I have a, I have a quick question. What is the dress code for Thursday night?
Dressy, casual? I don't know if that even is, is a phrase, but a little dress.
Not cocktail?
Oh, no, 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 not cocktail. No, 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 no. No, just like business attire. Every day going to school attire. Church attire. I don't know. I'm not even sure what's correct anymore, to be honest.
Anyone else? Is there a motion to adjourn? There's a motion by Mr. Campbell. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Harris. All in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Any opposition? The meeting is now adjourned. Thank you and good night.